All right, good evening. I'll call to order strategic planning for Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. Let the record show that all older men are present with the exception of Alderman Tanis, who is excused. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee meeting held Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Could I get a second?
Sir.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. We have no unfinished business, but tonight we have a new referral for consideration. Well, a new old referral for consideration, and it is the Raze Grant application and a presentation by Molly Vandura. And so, I just, I was over there and chatting ahead of time, and I said, "Well, third time's a charm." But apparently, this is the fourth time. So, fourth time's a charm. Anyways, without further ado, Mayor, anything you want to add on this? This is part of the protocol for applying for this Raze, federal Raze grant.
Yes.
Community outreach.
We've been through this several times before.
Right.
Would I just let Molly and Jeff out of this here? And Carrie?
All right, Carrie.
Thank you. As noted, we plan to reapply to Federal Highway for up to a $25 million grant to redo the corridor two and a half miles from the corner of East State and Union Streets into St. Bonaventure University. Our project partners are the town of Allegheny and St. Bonaventure. And we have Jeff Bell here, who was Soulapoxi, who's actually funding Molly Vandura, who is our landscape architect and designer, and she's working closely with an engineering firm, sort of, at some point.
All right, well, good evening. So, I just wanted to just give you a brief overview of why the improvements are needed, what are the goals of the project that we've put together, what are our preliminary design ideas, and what are the costs and benefits? These are all components that we need to sell to the federal DOT to win this grant. So, why the improvements are needed, there's a bunch of reasons. The primary one is that the use case for West State Street has changed. It was optimized to move traffic through Ole'An and optimized for large trucks, but since I-86 was built, that's no longer uses this road. So, we need to accommodate the next generation of mobility, including bikes and scooters and transit service, and provide some more mobility hubs for our transit service. We need to also, this road was constructed more than 60 years ago, so it's really getting to the end of its life anyway. It's going to require being rebuilt, and that includes those utilities underground like water, sewer, and stormwater. So, whether we do these additional multimodal improvements, it will still need to happen in the near future. So, our study area is West State Street all the way from Union to St. Bonaventure. It's a commuter corridor with a high concentration of commercial activity. There's important institutions along West State Street that are destinations for people in the region. And something very important to note is that the city's schools are all on the north side of West State Street, but there is, I think, over 200.
Almost 500.
Almost 500 school students who live on the south side of West State Street. They have to cross that street every day because they're too close to get a bus. So, we need to improve the safety for the children that cross the street and for the other people that cross the street. Another thing I want to point out out here is that this area that's shaded in the lighter yellow is, it has two designations that are important to the federal government. These two census tracts are labeled as areas of persistent poverty and also historically disadvantaged communities. And because of that, that makes our project much more competitive for these spots, because those are the kind of projects that they want to fund. And we want to help make Ole'An and West State Street more accommodating for these disadvantaged and impoverished people in the community. Also, I want to point out that our project transacts three different wards within the city, so there's a lot of benefits to a lot of people in the city with this project. Just some existing pictures. The character on the east end of the corridor closer to Union Street is more downtown-like with the buildings closer to the back of the sidewalk. And as we progress east, or to the west, towards St. Bonaventure, we get more of an urban commercial feel with a pocket of some residential between 17th and 20th. And then, as we get closer to St. Bonaventure, the landscape opens up a lot more, but there's less separation, as you can see in this picture on the bottom right, between the sidewalks and the streets. So, our project goals, we want to transform West State Street for safety, equity, economic vitality, and for environmental best practices. We're going to do that by providing safer sidewalks and shorter crossing distance and making traffic flow more efficient. I'll show you in the next graphic what we're proposing, a shared use path and a two-way protected bike lane that's going to provide safe and continuous connectivity between downtown St. Bonaventure and the Allegheny River Valley Trail. Environmental things that we're going to do is provide some rain gardens and bump-out areas and a stormwater medium that's, at this point, is just going to be between First and Second Street. Street trees have a great environmental benefit, so we're going to put in as many as we can between the sidewalk and the street. They absorb stormwater, they absorb pollutants from the air, they reduce the noise, they reduce the urban heat hazard effect, and they have a lot more benefits, too. We're going to provide more and better bus shelters, additional safe and affordable and accessible transportation options like scooter rental stations and better accommodations for bikes and people on mobility devices. And we're going to create a place where small businesses can start up and grow and run. So, I know this graphic is hard to see. I've got a full-size printout over here if you want to take a look at it later. But basically, this is just demonstrating that we're doing this protected two-way bike lane from North Union Street to 11th Street here, and that's going to be up at sidewalk level. And then, from 11th Street to St. Bonaventure, it's a shared use path on the south side of the street. And that's, again, to provide that connect, continuous and safe connectivity between downtown St. Bonaventure and the Allegheny River Trail, which bisects our project at 20th Street and also at the west end at St. Bonaventure. We're proposing five traversable mini roundabouts. Those are at First, Fourth, Seventh, 20th, and Independence. And then, curb bumpouts and pedestrian refuge islands to help pedestrians get across the street more safely to reduce that crossing distance, too. There's other things that are shown on this graphic. I mentioned that we're going to have scooter and rental stations periodically along the street. There's three locations where we're going to put in bus stops with shelters and benches and bike racks, some electric vehicle charging stations, green infrastructure, the street trees. They're all called out on this graphic. And this is part of our grant application so that the people reviewing it can get a better idea of everything that we're proposing. These are some graphics that I want to share that kind of help illustrate to you in a quick and easy manner what we're proposing. So, this is the cross-section of the street between First and 11th. So, you can see that two-way protected bike lane on the south side. So, we've got a nice wide eight-foot sidewalk still. Then, the two-way protected bike lane, we still have about a four-foot buffer, which would be for like streetlights and trees and just that little extra space between the pedestrians and cyclists and the traffic. We still have parking lanes on both sides. There'll be a bump-out at intersections. That doesn't really take away much parking, if any, because you can't park your car right up to the corner anyway. So, we're just bumping it out at the corner. That reduces the pedestrian crossing distance, and it also makes pedestrians more visible to cars and helps the pedestrians also see the oncoming cars. Then, we have our 11-foot travel lanes on each side and a 10-foot center turn lane. Between First and Seventh Street, that center turn lane, we have it made with a different paving material, so it looks like a median, so we have that character of a median, but it's actually a center turn lane so that people can more easily access driveways and make left turns mid-block. That was some of the feedback we got in our public meeting last year, and we revised the design to reflect that. And then, also shown in this picture is that traversable mini roundabout. And then, this is the cross-section between 11th and 20th. So, we no longer have that eight-foot sidewalk and a 10-foot two-way bike path, but instead, we have a 10-foot shared use path. We've got a wider tree lawn. There's still parking on both sides in most areas. The 11-foot travel lane on each side, and now we have a 12-foot center turn lane, a little bit wider. Something that's different in this one is that we've got the bumpouts at the corners and then this pedestrian refuge in the middle, so it still helps reduce that crossing distance with the bumpouts and have, if people can't make it all the way across the street, they can take a break in that center pedestrian refuge and not finish their crossing. This is just a graphic that shows how the mini roundabouts work. You're familiar with the larger roundabouts on North Union Street, and I think there's a mini roundabout going on East State Street or Bear? Okay, yeah. So, there will be one going in regardless of this project, but how they function, here's a picture of Long, this is in Queenstown, New Zealand. It's a town that has a lot of, actually, a lot of lumber trucks going through there, and these things still work with those large lumber trucks and a bus that's pictured in here. But the cars go around the roundabout like normal, but you can kind of see the path of the truck that's ghosted in here. They have to drive over the apron a little bit so they don't take that curve all the way around the roundabout like a car does, but it's made for them to drive over. That's why they're called reversible. Some of the benefits of roundabouts, I know you're familiar with that at Ole'An, but they reduce peak speeds, but also, at the same time, improve traffic flow. They reduce the severity and the frequency of accidents, and they can make it easier for pedestrians to cross. And again, I mentioned the importance of making it easier for children to cross the street and disabled people, too. So, they will benefit greatly from the improved crossing at these intersections. This is just another view of the curb bumpouts and the medians with the pedestrian refuge islands. And then, I mentioned that we're going to put in some additional bus stops with shelters, shade, seating, and the nearby scooter rental stations and bike racks, but also an area for the bus to pull off so that it's not blocking traffic while people board and they have a little more time if they're disabled and want to put their bike on in front of the bus. So, we're also proposing at 20th Street, where Allegheny River Valley Trail crosses West State Street, to put in what we're calling Gateway Park and a multimodal hub. So, this hub will have a new restroom building, a scooter rental station, and it will have a bus stop with a shelter and benches and bike racks. And we're calling it this multimodal hub because of the bus stop, because of the intersection with the Allegheny River Trail, and our pedestrian and multimodal accommodations that we're adding along West State Street. And then, I mentioned EV charging stations along the route. We've got three clusters of them. We're hoping that that will help with Ole'An's characterization as being an mealy desert, and also, we're hoping that it will attract people to get off the interstate if they need to charge up and spend some time in Ole'An, maybe getting a meal or running an errand while the car is charging. And this picture is just the western end where it intersects with the Allegheny River Valley Trail at St. Bonaventure. We'll have a trailhead there with a scooter rental station, maybe an interpretive panel that shows the route of the trail. So, benefits. So, we have to really sell this project to the federal government, and we have to do a benefit cost analysis. And these are all the different benefits that we actually calculate and categorize. So, safety, it turns out, is the primary benefit by far of all these improvements, and that's because of the reduction of the accident frequency and severity that we achieved by adding the roundabouts, by adding pedestrian crossing improvements. So, that's our biggest number-one benefit. We also benefit from energy savings because where we're putting in the roundabouts will be eliminating traffic signals. We have travel time savings because, as I mentioned, people, traffic moves more efficiently through roundabouts, and there's less time spent waiting at a red light. So, we have travel time reduction. We've got fuel savings and vehicle emissions, all related to that travel time reduction. There's environmental sustainability benefits from the street trees and the green infrastructure. There's property value stabilization and growth that we're going to see from the streetscape improvements. There's improvements to pedestrian cycling, rolling, and transit facilities, as I mentioned. And these pedestrian and multimodal improvements really improve accessibility and equity along the corridor, which, as I mentioned, are very important components of winning this grant. And then, other benefits, including connectivity to existing trails, the EV charging stations. And then, so, cost, what's it going to cost? So, to complete all of these improvements that I outlined, including any associated stormwater system improvements, as well as replacing all the water and sanitary sewer lines from Union to the City Line at Independence Drive, that total cost is 27.8 million, we estimate. And the limit of the Raze Grant is 25 million. So, for 25 million, we can complete all of the streetscape and multimodal improvements, which are necessary to get that benefit needed to win the grant, and all of the associated stormwater system improvements. And we'll be able to replace the water and sanitary sewer lines from Union through 16th Street. So, the only gap that we would need to come up with additional funding for is water and sanitary sewer replacements from 16th Street to the City Line. And given the $25 million cost and the benefits that we calculated, the benefit-to-cost ratio is 2.5. So, there's two and a half times as many monetary benefits that would result from this project as we would be investing in the improvements. And an interesting fact is that 2.2% of that benefit ratio comes from the safety improvements alone. And those safety improvements are the roundabouts, the pedestrian signals at the crossing intersections and the crosswalks, and those pedestrian refuge islands that we've shown. So, they have a benefit-to-cost ratio alone of 2.2. So, it just shows how having some more innovative approaches to reconstructing this street rather than just reconstructing it as is, how much benefit that has and that benefit we need in order to win the grant to reconstruct the street that we need to be reconstructed anyway. Do you want to add anything, Jeff, or does anyone have any questions?
I'd like a couple of minutes. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your public service. I admire your civic involvement, your listening skills to represent all your constituents, and your good judgment to get big things done in Ole'An for all of us. This is our fourth run at the Raze Grant, and they are very competitive, which a community would not want, $25 million. No local match required to put toward critical, necessary transportation infrastructure. So, there are a lot of communities who will be applying against us, but we did really well last time. We came real close. We scored eight out of eight on the measuring criteria. The DOT only had a few recommendations for us. All those recommendations are incorporated in our current application. Sorry. My back. So, we think we've got a really strong application. Now, as you can imagine, these applications are extensive. It's about 50 pages. It includes all kinds of drawings, renderings, the benefit cost analysis, and we've had a number of public meetings now. I've lost track of them, and a lot of participation, and we've taken on some good input, and the input is incorporated, including the turn lanes that Molly pointed out and some other adjustments, the inclusion of a roundabout at Independence Drive that was by popular Some of the people who've come to these meetings refer to this as pipe dreaming and navel gazing, and they're concerned the city is wasting money on planning. So, the reason I jumped up, and I said this at a public meeting just last week, Soulapoxi is paying for the grant application. We're paying the consultants to put all this stuff together. We've done that for the last three efforts, and we're doing it now. Why, you would say? Why are we doing that? Well, because we observe that it's going to cost at least $15 million just to rebuild West State Street as is, and the pipes beneath $6 million additional, and that bill is coming due. Molly said 60 years old. Actually, this street was built in 1896. It is 120 years old, so you can't put this off forever. We're looking down an abyss of 20, 21, 25 million dollars just to get caught up on capital investment maintenance. So, our thinking at Soulapoxi, and my colleagues agree with me in doing this, is let's see if we can get $25 million of federal money and relieve Ole'An's taxpayers of the burden of replacing this critical piece of infrastructure. It's the most important street in town. It's the most important street in the county. It has more traffic, it has more residents living along it, and it has far more businesses and jobs than any other street in the county. So, it's very, very important. You don't get the money for keeping things the same. That's just not how it works. It's raised. It's reinvesting in infrastructure, American infrastructure, sustainability and equity. The sustainability and equity has to flow from the design. The design has to change. We have to be able to demonstrate improvement. As Molly pointed out, the key improvement is safety. West State is not safe now. Think of those students, 50 feet of busy pavement. That's a long way for little legs to carry you. With this design, we don't have the cross-section, but we have reduced that crossing distance to 11 feet, and it's one lane at a time. So, that's a huge benefit. The roundabouts are a huge benefit. We don't have the injury-producing T-bones and head-on accidents we have in most vendor vendors. And we have the data from North Union Street to prove this. Injury accidents are way down, pedestrian bicycle usage is way up, 400%, up. 400% up in pedestrians and 80% down in injury accidents. So, it really works, and that's where the biggest benefit comes from. But we've also seen on North Union Street that when you do a really thoughtful, multimodal streetscape investment, the private sector follows. There's been a lot of investment along North Union Street. There's even more potential on West State because West State really is the incubator for Main Street entrepreneurship in Catalina County and small businesses. So, anyway, I can clearly bang on and on, but it would be really great, I would really thank you if you would approve us to submit this grant application yet again and tell you when. It's not a matter of if, we're going to keep going. We said this is a never-ender. We're going to keep going. When Ole'An wins this, you will have undertaken the single biggest street investment in Ole'An's recent history and with somebody else's money, and that would be brilliant. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from any of the members of the council? As someone who joined the council, and North Union Street was completing instruction to see the way that North Union Street has revitalized our downtown community, but how that has helped to really spill over into our neighborhoods, into our parks, into the, you know, Jeff pointed out a great point, the private investment that followed. And I think that's, we're all on the same page. Ole'An's not going to sustain itself, let alone prosper, by staying the same. And that's been something that I've completely supported and councils that have completely supported that I've worked with and been on over the last eight years. If you want things to get better, things have to change. And so, I truly appreciate the vision and the commitment, working obviously alongside the Community Development Office, the mayor. I know, I speak on behalf of most of the council. We support this change. We recognize the infrastructure need, the huge cost. So, you know, I don't know where $25 million would come from if we had to be responsible, right, to repair West State Street and the infrastructure underneath it today. So, I think we just, we keep going for it. And anything, Mr. Mayor?
I just want to thank Jeff Bell for supporting this and putting up the money for the design phase of it. That is huge. So, Jeff has been, I guess you could say, a wonderful front of the city for the past as long as I've been mayor, and before that, the previous administration, too. So, Jeff, we want to thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this was just a, for notification sake, right, Carrie? There will be an application coming up that we have to actually vote on, yes?
Tuesday.
Okay.
This coming Tuesday. We have reservations.
Okay.
The application itself is due the 28th of this month.
Okay. All right. Okay, very good. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Carrie. Nothing further here. No committee reports. I'll make a motion to adjourn our strategic planning. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. We adjourn our strategic planning.
Call to order Public Safety Committee for January 16th. I'm sorry. February 6th. Long way to wait. I'd like to wrap the show off. All women are present. Plead for previous many minutes from January 16th. I'll make a motion to get a second. Seconded by Fornie. All in favor? I oppose. Unfinished business, we have three items. The first being Irving Street lighting.
Oh, so, I found the poll number if nobody else did. That was poll 10, and between the second and third block of Irving. And I went there at night and took some videos. It is very dark. There's, there's lights at, like, the corners, right? So there's at the intersections, but there's nothing in between all of those streets on, on Irving. I spoke, well, I actually knocked on all the doors and I had three people answer. All the other ones were closed up and, well, windows. So, um, but they, they were in favor of the extra lighting. They said it is very dark on the road. They normally keep all the lights on the outside of their house on because it is so dark on a regular basis. So they would appreciate the extra lighting. I did explore a little further down to the third and fourth, or the, the next block of Irving, which was between third and fourth and kind of the same setup. It's, it's pitch black at night. And, um, and then on the third and fourth block of green as well. So the, the first part of, the first part of green has a light like every other pole, but then when you cross over Second Street, there's like nothing. There's, there's something right kind of between on Second and a little up from green, but then there's nothing until you get to the end of, intersection is down there, of Fifth, I think, and green. So that whole area, I mean, the lighting, I think, needs to be about, just even one in the middle. And that's, a lot of the longer streets have a couple in the middle that kind of light them up. The ones like the numbered streets going the opposite way. So, I mean, that was just my investigation, kind of looking at that area. And the people I spoke to were in favor. And with the lights being shining, you know, they're not like spotlight, they're shining down. So it's really just kind of illuminating, you know, the light as people walk or drive through. And I think with that area with a lot of people, I mean, walking or even just getting in and out of their cars in the evening, recommended at least on that area, but then to kind of evaluate what's poll thirteen and poll fifteen. Or kind of in the middle of the room.
So the, it is on Irving Street where you're looking for the light, right?
Yeah, so specifically where the request came in was that poll ten. Yeah, Irving. But then in further investigation, we kind of have the same situation on Irving still, but the next, like, between Third and Fourth Street. So this was between Second and Third, poll ten is. And then if you go between Third and Fourth, poll thirteen. And then between Third and Fourth on Green, it's kind of the same situation. There are just, there's no lighting and it's so dark.
So what I noticed when I went down there to look, just to get a general idea of what it looked like, it seemed like all of the lights that were on post were every other pole. So, but I thought we were looking at Third and Fourth at the beginning because I remember someone mentioning near the school, that's on Fourth.
Yeah, this, she was at three oh, the person that put in the request was, or that initially called to kind of start the investigation. She was at three oh eight, which is between, is on Irving between Second and Third. And, and there's only the light at Second and Irving and then Third and Irving. There's nothing in between. There's, I mean, there's like four poles, but there's nothing. There's only the two lights.
Does anyone else?
Cause I went at night. I have a video.
I mean, I would, I would like to take a look at it again, but I mean, I'm not the deciding factor on whether or not they get a light or not. If no one else has checked it out or had anything else to add or anything, then, I mean, you wanna go forward with the PL? Mayor, do you have anything you wanna add?
I know, I know Dave Payne went down and checked it out and I can't remember the, the poll number he said where, who could put a light. But that was behind the old school down there because that's, that's what I felt the block we were talking about. So, and I don't know because I can't remember what poll ten, I just looked at my emails. He did make a recommendation for what poll it would go on. I'll search it tomorrow and get it out to everybody.
Okay, so I guess.
Wouldn't three oh eight be between Third and Fourth? Not Second and Third, right?
I figured it'd be closer to Second.
So, no. And you, so you know, you come down Irving and you get to like where the church is. Okay, then you, so that's First Street.
Oh, what?
Yeah. Then you get to the next, so then you, like, you pass the old parish school, whatever. And then that is Second and you kind of like make your turn right there. So that, it's, three oh eight is between the Second Street block and the Third Street block. And I think the school's down on Fourth, right?
Yeah.
So it's before IJM, but that block down there has the same problem behind the school. I mean, so if you're gonna put out, if, if there's ability to put up one, you should evaluate the whole area. So it's not one, you know, another request comes in, another request comes in, cause it all has the same issue.
Yeah, and the lights are all every other pole. They're not every pole.
No, on the shorter streets, there's not, it, it, on the numbered streets that going this way, they're every other pole. On the, this, on Irving and, and the other part of Green, they're just at the, the, they're just at those intersections. At the numbered streets, there's nothing in between.
Yeah, there's no, there's no light in that vicinity.
And so when I went down there in the eight, I went down there in night. I went down there at nine o'clock at night. And if you turn your car off and your lights, it's, it's like, it's pitch black. I mean, you have the dimly lit at the end, but you're in the middle of the street. I mean, it's, it's dark.
So we could, what, present this as a PL, get it together and then give Tiffany the poll number of whatever the mayor had checked it out and suggested.
Specifically near across from three oh eight.
Three oh nine. Is it, is it the poll right in front of three oh nine?
Yes, poll ten. I, yeah, poll ten. And I think the one down by the school, mayor, is poll thirteen, cause I went and checked that out.
I think I sent them a block west and you want them back to block east, three hundred block, which would start at Second Street and when you go west, that starts at three hundred.
Yeah, if you pull it up on Google, Google Images, there is, there's not any light in between the middle of the, the block. There's one at the far end, which would be Second Street, and there's an, you know, another one which was supposed to be
That's Third.
Third. So I'll go down there, you know, and I would encourage all of us to, to, to go down and check it out. But I don't have a problem. I don't see a problem with putting forward a PL to put in a, a light there.
Panis? Just for consideration's sake, we've done a couple of these. I'm curious to know what the cost is per light that we either initial or are long-term energy, how we pay for that. I think it's just a set fee, right? There's no meters or anything. It's something, some kind of agreement with power company?
We used to, it, it used to say it was a thousand dollars a year for, but then we went to the LED lighting. So we'll have to get another estimate now on that, so.
I always wanna say, like, I thought now that we went to the LEDs, like, the annual cost is
It's down.
Minimal, right? But what is the, what is the installation cost? Do we have an idea of what?
That I'll have to find out.
Right, no, I'm not saying we don't do things, but you need to consider it, right? I'm not speaking about that one. All right, well, we can move that one to a PL and then we'll get Tiffany the poll numbers that she needs. And then that way, at least we have that going in the motion. Nothing else on that one. We'll move on to four fifty-seven North Union Street.
I do have a, a partial update on that one. The, actually, a, a week or so ago, the actual owner came in to talk to Coles about what's going on. So Coles is working, while the mayor is in court, like you said, and, but Coles is also working with the owner. So we'll see what, we'll see where it takes us.
Any questions on that one, McDonnell? All right, cool. Moving on to Grossman Avenue Parking. You have no idea who?
This was brought up by Director Thompson before we left. They were waiting on the council to determine how they wanted him to fall.
And I thought they were gonna reach out to Alderman, Panis on parking, uh, no parking one side, cleaning up the code.
All right, so I mean, we can, we can move it to the next public safety and get an update from mayor or you just, you're not doing anything with it? We're done? So we can just move on from that?
The thing is the poll and what we can enforce are two different things. So we either need to change the signage there or we need to amend the poll.
So we were looking last time, just, I think a simple fix was just to change the signage?
Yeah.
So we need a PL for that? Does the signage make it match code or we're not sure?
Currently, the signage does not match code.
Right, but is there thought to match code or? The last time that was on the book was what? No parking on the west side?
Yep.
Entire west side. So just go back to that, no parking on the west side?
Did anyone reach out to Jason?
No, I'm glad. So I was gonna follow up before he left, so probably just could. There's a, currently there's a sign that says no parking here to corner, up there by the corner house. But the last thing that actually was on the book said no parking on the entire west side. That's, but there was other things that were, they found record that it was never signed or something, official, any changes. And the last official one was no parking west side.
So as of right now, the code outline says the entire street is no parking west side, but the code book in DPW says no parking here at corner. And that's where the sign is. There's just a no parking here at corner that's currently there. So that sign is out of compliance with what the code outlines. So we need to figure out whether it needs to be no parking here at corner, but that upsets the, the one resident there, correct? Director Thompson said that the one resident wanted no parking in the entire street?
It's currently the entire street, but there's a resident that's currently parking. That's why they wanted to do it. They wanted to have it just the corner and still in the middle.
So why can't we just go with what the code is and put the correct signage up? Maybe the wrong sign was installed from the get-go.
I'd recommend that we postpone this and follow up with the residents on Grossman and have Tiffany, Tiffany, could you send us the exact wording, please, of both of those? What is currently online on E-code and then what is in the DPW? Mayor, who, who's working with, for DPW? Should any requests go through you?
Yes.
Okay. And then whatever the DPW codebook is, and we can follow up on that in two weeks.
All right. We postponed for two weeks. Put it back on the Public Safety Committee. All right, then moving on, new referrals. We have RFP for cameras in the parks. Is this the mayor?
We talked about it, Carrie.
Sure.
Carrie?
The mayor had advised that the council had an item that was discussed at a meeting regarding putting cameras in all of the city-owned parks. So I worked, and that was the mayor, IT, the police chief, or DPW director, and the electrician. So we figured, you know, the project scope and what we were aiming to do with camera placement. And so I took that information back and I drafted a request for proposals to follow proper procurement guidelines, released that in September. We held a mandatory pre-proposal conference. That was October twelfth. And there was a tremendous response by these contractors. I mean, they came as far as West Virginia, it was Queens. I, I was just blown away by it. I believe there are approximately fifteen companies that came in. So then we sat in a conference room. They asked questions during the conference. And so from that, I went back and met with the same colleagues and we worked to draft the addendum that was released in answering those questions. So in that, they had asked for an extension, so we pushed the deadline out. The deadline was extended from October twenty-seventh to November twenty-seventh. So we had a, a really great response. I believe all of that information was provided to members. And then I worked with, in scoring them. There were three of us that then scored. It was our former DPW director, Jared Bolts from IT and myself. And so ultimately, we ended up, we're recommending Nest. And we did the scoring based upon the criteria that was outlined in the RFP document, which had to do with project understanding and innovative approach, choice of equipment, ability to perform, and completion of similar project in size. This company, as it turns out, is a certified MWBE company. I know there was no goal per se placed on it because this is not state or federal funded. However, with the city being an equal employment opportunity provider and employer, I just wanted to point that out. However, the cost, obviously, is quite large. It's eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifteen cents. And we met numerous times, and there are other costs that would be associated with moving forward with the cameras in, in the eighteen and eighteen owned city parks. You would have to provide electric to the park, so our electrician has estimated that to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then with that, IT figures their sort of recurring monthly and annual cost. So you would need an appliance at each location, so that was estimated at twenty-five thousand a year. And then you'll need your base internet, so that was estimated at eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars a year. And then you'll need another spectrum fiber cable, so that would be an additional twelve thousand a year.
Any questions or comments? John?
So, thank you, Carrie, for, for the effort to gather this information. I think this is a critical investment that we really need to seriously consider putting into our parks and maybe eventually even throughout our downtown and so forth, as, as I think that's the way things are going in, in terms of security. So the next question is, obviously, the size of the cost. In your experience, are there particular grants that we can start thinking about or looking for off the top of your head that would be perfect or well-suited for this?
I don't know that. I would have to look into that.
Okay. Okay, just curious.
Anyone else?
So what I can get is total project area, probably close to one point two million dollars?
Well, there's more cost. I mean, honestly, in addition to that, I failed to mention, you would need to buy screens and outfit the police department, so there would be renovation costs involved as well.
Okay, when we were talking about these cameras a few years back, we brought up the fact that years ago, thirty years ago, we used to have, I can't remember what they were called, Park Police or Special Police, that used a police car and, and patrol these parks. And I thought we were gonna look into seeing if we could start that program up again too. The mayor probably knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, civil defense they were called, yeah, at the time. But there's, you can't seem to get an interest, and when people wanted to volunteer, that was a volunteer. I think the city gave them like a thousand dollars or something like that so they could use for their own use. And it was a volunteer group. They would come in in the summer months and, and they'd work from like six at, six at night until eleven at night, patrolling the parks. They went, parks goes at ten, so they would work till eleven so they could patrol there, so. But that, that group no longer exists.
Simon?
So I, I have a question because between the, at least from my view, between the top two contenders, you know, it, it looks like the, the scoring differential is about nine, but the cost differential is more than twice as much. So I'm guessing kind of in So, I'm guessing, kind of in a, a synopsis, what you would see the differences, because I'm looking at all the points. And, and specifically, those two, the, the two highest are very close, but the cost differential is significant.
So if you look in the R F P document with the scoring criteria, cost was only five percent of it. It wasn't one of the highest-weighted factors, and it was more about satisfying the project scope?
Well, I, I, I get that, and I think I'd have to go back and spend just a little more time with this, but, I mean, we're talking well over twice as much between the, the two, um, between the two, right? And, and I get cost certainly is not the only factor, but when we're talking about our taxpayers and looking at that, you know, I, I am interested to know what was, kind of the defining points. I, I get the points count, but that doesn't help when you're not sitting on the process to know, you know, where, where are we losing with, with going from in that nine points, if that makes sense to anyone? Because that is, it, it is an incredibly, it is a, a very significant difference in terms of cost.
Okay. I'd like to throw in my two cents, uh, personally, I wouldn't spend a million dollars in a way on surveillance. Uh, you know, these companies are big companies, they're, they're selling a high-ticket item. I feel like only it's more of a, somebody with wits puts something together, starts trying it in one park, makes the system work, tweaks it, you know, somebody in engineering, D P W. electricians. That would be my thought. Um, there are, there's probably ways to cut a lot of those big costs out. There's companies getting into single-unit solar-powered cameras and things that can stand alone. They're wireless, they don't need power onto them. Um, I'd be looking to make a deal probably with the company. I, I think most of our parks have internet from some corporation that wants to spread their name, right?
No, the, the majority of them don't even have a laptop, that we found in, uh, the assessment of this. I, I have it written down in my files exactly which ones do it.
Well, I would say the small parks, but I figure, doesn't Lincoln and Warvets have some kind of internet service in them even? Somebody provides to the public?
Lincoln does, I don't know about Warvets.
I'm pretty sure Warvets did.
In fact, wireless has, uh, has service in, uh, Warvets and Lincoln Park and, uh, Stadium.
Can I interrupt there? We can't piggyback off that, this is security. We have to come back to our network dispatching. So we have to use our, which we, D P M back.
Well, I'm sure there's hurdles, but I would look for the, I would look for the cost-effective ways to deal with that, rather than spend a million bucks.
And that's, and that's probably not counting if somebody's sitting in the police station or wherever these monitors are, looking at these cameras, right? Or are we only gonna look at them if there's a problem?
Yeah, you might thought there, although I think the police department needs, uh, renovations just from the, it feels like a jail cell, not behind the bars in there. But looking at screens, I don't think is an efficient way to do it. You know, you have, it's basically a record, something, something's up or somebody caused a mess, if you have a way to find it. Carrie, now, I don't think, uh, surveillance will make sense.
John?
Yeah, I, I guess, and if, and if, Carrie, if you wanna, um, follow back up, uh, offline with this, that's fine too. Um, but, but, so Alderman McColl brought up a valid point, right? Everything comes down to money at, at the end of the day, if you want the best service. Um, but I mean, I even compare it back to, we were looking at kind of the, the best, um, website designer. Um, and then we just was deciding, the, the council felt it was just too much of a cost, and so we kind of went with the, the second best, right? Um, and so, maybe some of the takeaways between the pros cons or, or whatever, the cost benefits of, you know, looking at the, the second provider for such a substantial cost savings, you know? Are they still, are they a viable option? And, and again, maybe offline, if you wanna send us an email with some of your thoughts, um, that would be appreciated. But, but I think it's, it's worth exploring additionally. I think Alderman Panis brings up, uh, a valid point too. As much as I would love to see eventually cameras in every park, I think we probably need to start with the parks where we have the biggest investment, right? So obviously, you know, Lincoln Park, Warvets, uh, Oak Hill Park now, um, and, and, and especially, uh, even, even Kingswood, right? So I mean, there are some, you know, these parks where we've just finished upgrading eventually Marcus Park, Quinn and Tandem. We can partner with them on something, you know, to provide, uh, sec- security there, but, you know, maybe we do it one-off, I don't know. But, uh, I still think this is extremely important. Um, I just maybe we, we look at a, a more strategic approach too, I, um, I don't know.
So I would have to go out of here again.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, we can't just go to the next cheapest one, because we did the scoring, we followed procurement. And so, we, we recommended.
I see.
And, and it was based upon our scoring, I can provide our individual scoring sheets.
Okay.
Um, and then we did them, we weren't together, so it just came out that way.
I see.
And so ultimately, if you wanna change the project scope, um, we, we have to scrap everything and start over. Because then I need a more defined location.
Okay.
Um, I mean, in our pre-proposal conference, it was, solar was mentioned. If they had the capability, then they would put that in their response. And so some are mentioned in some of the respondents, and some are, I mean, I reviewed, I don't know, it was eight or nine responses. I mean, as you can see, there's, they're quite thick and lengthy, and I read them, and just, um, so I, I would need more guidance, because that was a big effort on all of our divisions to do that. And it sounds like we're gonna have to redo it.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm in agreement, I, I think when we do also cost analysis and we look at some of the parks on here, that we do not have significant structural dollars invol- involved that, you know, we're looking at, at damage that we should look at those that we have the most, um, that are either at greatest risk, right? In terms of annualism, but also where we have the greatest investment. And there's some parks on here that, they probably need more investment, but they don't have it right now. And, and so I don't know if it would make sense to put, go through the process of, of putting cameras in there and then to also invest in police time in terms of monitoring, or at least going back and doing oversight over.
All right, um, I wanted to throw in my two cents on this. Uh, first, Carrie, uh, apologize that we have the council for this turning out to be a waste of time. Um, I know when I first came on the council, I mentioned something about getting cameras in the parks. Uh, I remember being up in Portville at a wedding, and, and their park downtown, there were cameras. So I remember mentioning it, but I wasn't the first, as was mentioned before, I came on the council, thought it was a great idea. Uh, looking at the numbers, looking at what we have presented before us, uh, I know, if this were my money, no. Uh, so I feel like this is the same way that my constituents will be thinking and feeling. Uh, when I look at it and I say, you know, yes, it would be nice to have this, uh, in our parks. At the same time, the cost just seems to be more than what, uh, the council's willing to swallow. Uh, hearing everyone else's, uh, comments and thoughts and feelings, uh, I do believe, uh, we are not far away from something though. I think, uh, if you look at the fact that we have, uh, Braden Stadium, uh, Lincoln Park, Warvets, that are all updated, right? Uh, why not invest in those now? And then as the city progresses and as the city works on each one of those parks, uh, maybe we can add that security system to the scope of the project. Add the cost, but then every time we do an upgrade to a park, the parks will be brought up to where the others are. Um, I, I think that would be a good, uh, compromise. Uh, those parks that don't have electricity, uh, I think a good one would be to maybe try to find, even though it was difficult the first time around, try to find someone that has, uh, solar-preferred systems. Uh, I mean, that's the age and era we're going into now. I think it would be, uh, better, uh, financially, probably come out your pocket more at the beginning. But then it saves us down the road of paying twenty grand for, uh, maintenance, software maintenance fees. Uh, fourteen grand for cloud and, and three hundred for a basic internet, and, and then doing fiber optics. I mean, you're talking about multiple costs that if we had, uh, solar, would eliminate some of those costs anyway. You still have to provide the internet and so forth, but, um, that's just my thought process and a, a compromise. And, uh, maybe working on doing just those parks where we have our major resources, our major equity in right now.
And I mean, you know, just kind of dabbling in security and wireless technology and things these days, we're, we're in a transition zone. It's like when TVs started getting huge, everybody wanted the biggest TV, and the price is up. Things without wires are still kind of expensive, you know, so they're out there too. But if you can hold out a little while, see how the price of TVs come down, it's, it's kind of the same thing. Somebody will be selling you the easiest product and it's the least infrastructure, it'll be a lot cheaper if, if we have the time. My thought would be that, like everybody's feelings, I think ours, we go to the parks that we've invested in our fresh and maybe spend some money there if we can get the right system.
John?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a recommendation too, um, and, and I, what I would like to, you know, request on behalf of, of the council is, um, I guess, some additional council involvement, uh, as this moves forward. So whether it's with Alderman Robinson and, you know, Jen Forney, uh, as, as Chair of, of Parks, some, some council involvement in, in that process, because really, up until now, we haven't had any feedback until this, you know? And, and, and I don't wanna call it a wasted effort. Um, again, we've got the data, now we've got the information, maybe we can, we can all try to put our heads together and look for grants or something like that. But if we go partially back to the drawing board, I think it would be helpful to, to bring in some of the Aldermen into that process to communicate, you know, some of the points that, that Jason brings up. Um, I mean, I guess I'd like to have a further conversation. Does it need to be live TV back to the police department? Or is it suitable just to have something on record that goes up into cloud as a good detriment, an deterrent? Um, and again, makes it easier for police to find someone that spray paints, uh, you know, graffiti on the wall, wherever. Um, you know, I, I think, I think it just would help everyone be on the same page. So then we can communicate back to us, you know, what, what some of those costs potentially look like. And, um, I think just everybody's on, yeah, again, on the same page.
I just have a comment.
Yep.
Um, so just to play devil's advocate, the reason where we want cameras in our parks, um, is to deter that kind of activity. And that, some of that activity that's taking place are in the parks that don't have the strong infrastructure. And so initially, when this conversation came across that that was the purpose, to deter the spray painting, you know, the other things that may happen, um, after hours. And so just kind of throwing that out there as, you know, for instance, I'll just, and, and Franchot is a popular park that we're trying to invest in, um, however, you know, we have, we, we have a ways to go there, but it's definitely needed and it's a utilized park, it's a heavily utilized park, and in that park, you know, cameras would benefit in that area. But again, it's not one like, um, Lincoln Park or, or Warvets or, or Braden, or so. Um, that's just, that's my comment, that's all I really have to say.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
May I ask just one question?
Yes.
So, uh, we have these contractors reaching out to us, um, looking for an update and wanting to know if we're gonna abort the contract. How do I respond to them?
Mayor?
I think next Tuesday night, we put it out and the council can reject it and then we go from there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I guess that'll end that conversation. Uh, that kind of sucks, but, all right, any other comments, questions for our public opinion? Okay, uh, there's none, uh, approval of committee reports, we have none, so I'll make a motion adjourned in a second.
Sure.
Second by the stage, all in favor, if I oppose or adjourn?
Okay, I'll follow our finance committee meeting for February, June, June, yeah, that's hoping, February sixth. Um, all Aldermen are present, um, they have approval for minutes, where, which were January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, approval of minutes. I'll make the motion, maybe a second?
Sure.
Okay. Alderman Robinson, get the thing there, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Okay, unfinished business sewer pump rent.
So, uh, I think if, uh, sent some emails to you guys, talking about the pump rental. Uh, we need to kind of make a decision on whether we're gonna continue to rent the pump at the, the sewer labs up in Northland. Uh, the pump rental per month is, uh, thirty-four hundred dollars. Uh, so there's two, there's two rental fees, one is thirty-four hundred, that's the pump. And there's, uh, another monthly rental for some heart piping and some fittings and things that I believe is nine hundred a month. Um, currently, we spent about forty-one thousand in pump rental fees. And, um, saying some quotes, so a new pump with a one-year warranty is fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand. The buyout for the rental unit with no warranty is forty-three thousand, eight fifty-five. And available funding, we had thirty-three thousand, five sixty in sewer contingency that could be used towards a purchase, um, or continuing to rent the pump. So just bringing this up for a conversation to talk about how we'd like to proceed.
There's, I'm saying, would there be, what's the balance left for the money moved over for the rental fees? In November, we moved by twenty-six, twenty-seven?
That, that is April, we've already rented. We don't, we don't have any, uh, current funds available moving forward.
Brad, how many more months are we looking?
Yeah, I, I would anticipate.
Conservative.
I don't know, you know, hopefully no later than the end of August. I, I would, I would hope we could finish this up by the end of July.
So that gives us about twenty-four thousand, eight hundred, right in the ballpark of continued, if we continue to rent. I think that's about what we came up with before. That takes us to the end of July, if everything is perfect on time and we don't run into any hiccups, right? So.
So end of August.
Hmm?
So end of August, September.
So, so September.
Yeah, so that's giving us six months, if we go with six months more kind of rental, uh, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred in that ballpark. So I believe the, the discussion, and 'cause the, the mayor and John and Brad, we had met to take a look at this because we've been, this has been on our agenda for quite a long time, that we've been renting it. And, you know, that we were waiting for the state to hear, then we were waiting for, you know, can we get any money back for what we spent? And, and then after we had gotten a negative about that, no, then we were waiting for our city attorney to render an opinion, and that took a couple of months, so here we are. And we've expended, I've forgotten the figure, four, forty thousand, at least, I think, in rental fees?
Yeah, for just, just over forty.
So we've expended forty thousand in rental fees, to continue to rent it would be twenty-four thousand, eight hundred. So we've expended forty thousand in rental fees to continue to rent it would be twenty-four thousand eight hundred if we were on point for the next six months and we got it done within that timeframe. So we had, my understanding initially, and that's why I had asked for it, Brad, was that it was forty-nine thousand to buy out the, the pump that we're currently using that would have no, um, warranty, but it's the forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-five, that's the final one, right? Because at that point, we were looking to say, well, does it make sense to buy the new pump for fifty-seven with a, with a full twelve months warranty? And so that's kind of what we were weighing with the idea that there was a eight thousand dollar difference. And now there's like a fourteen thousand dollar difference, right? So part of it is what's the, and we looked at what, what would we do with it, you know, the resale value is there. Would we resell it, right, because can we get what we, what we paid for it? And then in essence, save twenty-four thousand eight hundred of taxpayer money if we resell it at about the same rate. But we would have to be committed to reselling, right? We did talk about also that there was some limited value in maintaining it. And I think you said we might use it two or three times a year. Um, we do sometimes, I guess, rent out things to other municipalities, but, you know, um, but if we were looking to do something, it almost made sense to see if there was indeed that resale so that we could save the city the, the twenty-four eight. Um, that's my takeaway, I guess, um, does that sound?
I reached out about the, um, is the warranty on the pump transferable? I've not heard that.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll revisit that, um, if it's weak, ask again. Um, you know, will we use the pump if we were to keep it? Yeah, we'll use it. You know, like, does that, not having one of that size right now, we use our other ones all the time, but this pump, we use them many times a year. So would we use this in an application where those might be too big? Yeah, I just don't know how often.
Okay, Alderman Bennett.
Brad, I just asking, just trying to figure out the cost difference there. On November twenty-first, you asked the council to transfer twenty-seven thousand four hundred and forty dollars to cover the rental costs until June. So if we were to buy that to- tomorrow, the rental stop, there should be a balance left there. That's what I was asking, do you know that number?
Yeah, I'll have to look and see what the balance is in that line.
That's the number I was asking you about.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to look and see what that balance is.
Okay. Is that, is that why then we're only be looking for the difference of that balance to, let's say, buy the used one at forty-three? You're actually only looking for that balance?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll have to look and see what that, that budget line, um, balances.
Did we transfer it?
Yes.
Couldn't that be in the resolution? Is it for the twenty-seven? What was the resolution?
Do we have a, like, do we have the permanent engineering solution? Have we, I'm trying to recall, we have taken a bid or selected anybody to repair this, where do we stand on that?
So we secured an engineering firm, they're working on the permitting process and the final engineering designs, we can go up to, uh, bid to find a contractor to come in and do that.
Okay.
Um, they don't have that final engineering plan done yet. Um, it, it's fairly straightforward, I mean, we're only talking a hundred and one feet here, it's just, um, replacing a certain by the level.
With the Army Corps though, you want?
Right, I just, I'd like to make sure we're held up longer than we have to for.
Uh, Army Corps, they're gonna, they're gonna exit today.
That should, sorry, that should have about seventeen, or seventeen thousand dollars left, based on the number that you presented, the thirty-four twenty-nine with that balance, it should be about seventeen thousand dollars.
In the budget line or in?
In that budget line that you asked for the money for the rental.
Okay.
So if it's, let's say, March first is a, didn't purchase date, that day, there should be roughly seventeen thousand.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions about the existing pump. So what is the condition of the existing pump? I pretend I know nothing about pumps. So does it run non-stop? Has it been running non-stop?
No, it's on, uh, electronic floats.
Okay.
So when the level gets up to a certain point, kicks up, blow it on.
Okay.
Pumps it down, turns up.
Okay, so what's the condition of the pump?
It was brand new when we got it.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know how many hours are on it, it probably runs an hour and a half a day. Ish, somewhere in there, uh, we did have some minor damage to a replaceable part with it when it froze, um, that's been replaced.
These things are made to last, yes?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's. They don't like wear out in a year or something, no. Okay. So I'm just like trying to understand, to buy out even though it has no warranty, the existing pump, the existing pump, is gonna keep running?
Essentially, you'd be paying fifteen thousand bucks for a warranty.
Right, I just, these things don't wear out.
No, it won't.
It's not, it's not running twenty-four hours a day.
Something new is.
Yeah, whether your warranty.
Yeah, would have to be, that warranty is basically covering, if somebody screwed something up in their building. It's, it's, if it ran this long, it's gonna go be on warranty.
We're the only ones who run it.
Okay.
Alderman Robinson.
Um, this thing, uh, I'm a little more critical of this one. Uh, this has been going on for a while, uh, I feel like it has cost us a lot of money that we could have taken care of a long time ago. I know you can't predict, uh, when and how, you know, the job is gonna, you know, the job is gonna get done, started, completed, the whole nine yards. We've run into obstacles with this, that, and the other, but, uh, the fact that we've spent already upwards of forty K, uh, to me, that should have been foreseen, forecasted somewhere along the line, uh, to know that, hey, this pump is gonna pay for itself in rentals. We should just go ahead and buy it. The, the fact that it's come to the council numerous times and it has gone nowhere, uh, is a problem. Uh, this, uh, trying to select my words. Should have been decided a long time ago on whether or not we were gonna, A, purchase a new, B, purchase a used, C, keep renting at this amount. Um, at forty-three hundred a month, uh, that alone is enough to make me work a little faster on making a decision, especially the fact that it's on a levy. If we were held up by the Army Corps of Engineers, then again, then knowing how they work with the splash pad, then we should say, hey, we better buy this pump. Uh, so with that said, I did go and look up these pumps, they're the same style pumps that we use in the military. And these pumps, uh, I found mostly on the west coast, I couldn't find any distributors or anything on the east coast. But on the wet coast, west coast and Midwest, I did find they're anywhere from twenty and forty grand, uh, within the two to five year, two to five year age. Anything older than that, then a lot of them were just beat up, rusty, you know, three, five grand. Uh, so with that, if, I don't think we need to wait on anything else. We've already heard enough numbers, fifty million times, went back and forth, subtracted this, added that. The thing is forty-four grand, figure out how we can get forty-four grand. We got thirty-four left over in the one budget line. If there's money left over in a rental, add that to it, whatever we need to do to get to the forty-four and get the thing bought. And then we'll find out a usage for it. If they say they can use it, they can use it. Uh, if that gives us three pumps, it gives us three pumps. If the town of Olean or Portville or whomever says, hey, do you have that pump? Do you have one in this size? Can we borrow one? Sure, we can rent it to you. And then rent it to them for, for three hundred a month. Whatever you have to do to make the money back, I mean, it, it makes no sense to continue thinking and talking about it at forty-three hundred a month. That's just my two cents. Buy the pump.
And by our numbers, if, if, uh, if there's seventeen thousand left in, uh, what was transferred over and we have the thirty-three thousand in contingency, then that more than covers the, the cost of, of it. You know, and, and the difference between renting and that is if everything went according to plan versus purchasing is nineteen thousand. I'm not confident that we're gonna have it done in the timeframe that we anticipate. But I do think that we, we talked about it as being imminent. Um, a couple of the Aldermen have brought that up, that it's been imminent, but, but here we are many, many months later. I am of the mind too to purchase the, um, existing pump, um, which is, you know, a different view than I had at our previous meeting, in part because the cost is also different. And the reminder that we did transfer funds for a rental. So I am of the mind that we love to purchase the existing pump. Any other thoughts?
I agree.
Mayor, any thoughts? I mean, I know that's different than kind of where we came from.
Have a resolution prepared for next Tuesday night.
Yep, absolutely.
We'll look at how, we'll look at the, uh, how much is left in that account and, uh, then we'll go, how much we need out of, uh, if, if there's seventeen left in that account, we'll need to pull through three out of the contingencies. We'll figure that out and have the resolution for next, for next Tuesday night.
It's forty, uh, twenty-six, and we didn't know about Brad's, I didn't know, we didn't know about the nine hundred, I guess. You had said thirty-four twenty-nine ninety was the.
Yeah, so when, when winter rolled around, we ended up getting some hard piping, so we, if we had to bury it to prevent it from freezing.
I was saying, sort of, might be a little bit, but that should be about close, the number that I just gave you.
Brad, you, you did, I just went there, you did say right now we're, we're running hard piping, are we gonna have to purchase hard piping?
No.
Okay.
Um, no, I, I think if we were to purchase the existing pump, I think we would probably continue to rent the hard piping until spring, just till we don't have a, you know, any, any freezing going on, we don't want the pipe, the discharge pipe to freeze.
What is, what is the refreshment set, what does the hard piping cost us a month?
There, I think it was nine hundred for the hard piping with the fittings and all that stuff to run a hundred feet.
How many feet are you running?
Hundred and one feet.
Okay.
I mean, at worst, you need that for one more month.
Essentially, yeah.
April or March.
The month of March, so call it nine hundred.
Four thousand bucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, I just wanna make sure that, because we've had some challenges, we'll say along the way, that, that when that comes, that, you know, that we have an end date, you know, to give us that hard end date of when we're gonna send the hard piping back.
The, the one factor that we didn't talk about either is we don't, we don't own any port hoses or pipe to go to, to this pump. That's something else I want to.
Next year's budget.
Surprise.
One more thing.
Okay, so we're gonna put the resolution on for next week and be done with this section. Um, do you have your best guess when, when we might go out to kind of bid on?
I was in contact with an engineering firm today, um, we were talking about the proposed temporary, um, padding to this. Um, I, I don't foresee that happening, just given the timetable. I would hope two months.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
What is, what is the holdup, Brad? Is it, is it the Army Corps or just getting the engineering firm to push it through or?
We do have some permitting hoops to jump through. Uh, they've, they've all told us basically that they're gonna expedite and waive whatever they can to get this project going. Uh, right now, we're doing ground, groundwater testing, to make sure that once they dig it up, uh, what we're looking at as far as pumping groundwater out of this excavation site, um, so we don't get in trouble there. So that's, that's the phase of work right now.
Alderman Robinson.
I just wanted to remind everybody too, I remember that after this was all said and done, we were supposed to look at going to recoup this money from someone, I don't remember who. But that should include the rental of the pump, the purchase of the pump, the rental of this piping, the man hours, the overtime. It should include everything in there if we're gonna go and recoup anything from whomever. If, if this isn't the responsibility of the cities.
That, that's really kind of what has muddied the water that this whole thing is, in my opinion, this shouldn't even be our project.
Correct.
Okay, any other? Okay, we have no new referrals for consideration, no committee reports, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Robinson, all in favor, opposed?
All right, call that order, the City Operations Committee. Let the record show that all members are present. Approval of the previous minutes on January sixteenth, I'll make a motion to accept, any second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that was by Alderman Robinson. Uh, unfinished business, the vacant property legislation, Eric, are you doing that?
All right, so we spoke two weeks ago on this, um, the vacant registry stuff is, um, pretty much done. They put that together, uh, including, did you all receive ones that look like this, there's three different ones? Okay, so these, these would be the forms that they're gonna use in codes when people come in to register their, their vacant buildings. One's a direction thing, one's an exemption form, one's just a basic registration form. Um, and then the, uh, code org notices updates.
So, questions? Okay, next steps? Put it through for resolution for next week?
Yeah, it's Wednesday and it'll be referred out to me, so it'll be published.
It's gotta be published.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'd be looking at voting on it two weeks from this upcoming, so three weeks from tonight, right?
Yep.
Second.
Well, I'm just trying to decipher, so the vacant property regis, or legislation, on there also was the registration renewal and de-regi, dereg, registration section, correct?
That was part of, are you asking whether one, one's on the, the list and then it comes off?
Yeah, because there was something that it had on there, um, re-registered every sixty months. But you're talking about the one where if it's over a year, right? Cause we got two pack, two specific packets that I was looking at, and one of them, it looks like it has to do more with our, um, residential dwellings, but it looks like we got two sections on that, right? And I think, okay.
This is the one that's, it should maybe you'll register it, but if you leave for like snowboarding, there's a form, it's temporary, like what it on. But yes, then there's something there where you can take it off if you then have a plan to renew it.
Yep, got it. No other questions.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Are you staying up for the rental property?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I actually misspoke last time, remember the, the one with the red?
Mm-hmm.
So everything is new, the red are ones that Dave is kind of unsure about. So, uh, the current, um, the current rental inspection is twelve dash seventy through twelve dash eighty-four, twelve dash eighty-five. Um, so Dave put together his notes, um, he's not exactly sure where to insert these into the current code. So I think that would be a task. So, I think that would be a task better suited for our attorney and possibly someone of you.
Were you saying something to him?
Aye. You can read his notes, I'll figure it out.
Okay, so, any questions on that, or Sonny?
I do have, so, given the lettering, I'll tell you, it's the third page under fees, B one. There shall be no fees for the initial inspection to determine compliance. I thought we had determined that there would be a fee. That was my recollection.
It's probably a fee, right?
Apparently that would be...
I think it wasn't?
Sixty dollars, six ninety-nine.
It is sixty, you are right, but it wasn't that, didn't Ryan read and speak on that? It was if somebody just wants them to not do an official inspection, but wants them to move over to look at what they would need.
Then I think it needs to be clarified that a preliminary or something, because it kind of makes it sound like there's no fee attached to it, even though there's fees listed, so maybe it's just a matter of hoarding.
You're right, because that official inspection, there's no follow-up.
Yes, yes. And then, um, page five, under A, registration renewal and dereg- dereg- registration, that's where my brain was earlier. So, that is where we had some discussion about every three months or, or every three years, every s- five years. So, the language in here, just so we're aware, says sixty months, so that's five years. And we, you know, we talked about the challenges with, with having it, but honestly, five years? And I know it's just a point in time inspection, and that's been brought up, and that afterwards they might do whatever. But, I've been in a lot of these apartments, I've seen a lot of them from year to year, going in and seeing patients and stuff, and I can tell you that five years is a long time to go in between, um, those inspections. Um, particularly with some of the landlords that we know, we have routine problems with, we have a lot of really good landlords in the area, and we know that. So, unfortunately, laws and regist- regulation stuff are built for often the people who are not in compliance, and that does affect those who, who do the good job and the good compliance. I'm gonna say I think that five years, sixty months is too long. And I think that the residents that I was meeting with before would be in agreement. I get it's a point in time, but those point in times need to be a little bit closer together, is my opinion.
I think, if I recall, this is, this is kind of what started the ball rolling, as far as talking about timelines and, you know, Dave and I put together some projections, I don't have them with me tonight, um, but doing them every, uh, sooner than five years would be a kind of a tax on our personnel, um, to the point where we probably have to look at hiring another co- enforcement officer just to handle these.
I do, I do recall that as a, as a point of, of contention, of, you know, a significant point, right? Um, because, I don't know, Chief, if you've got a little statistics, but last I heard, new fifty percent of only in was rentals. And, and so if you think of trying to work your way through that with the staffing levels that we have, I agree with you a hundred percent, uh, Sonny. I just, how we meet that manpower, I don't know.
Because what I'll say is everybody, everybody should have safe, affordable housing, and my, my word has a lot of rentals in it. And, you know, I look through, I think that the minimum standards you guys put together are really good. I think that, um, a large percentage of the popu- a large percentage of the, um, rentals won't meet them, but I do think that this is a, this is the minimum standard that it should be. And, you know, things like, you know, every dwelling unit shall have adequate rub- rubbish and, and garbage storage facilities. I think that that's one of the complaints we have routinely, and this will force landlords to, to make that happen. Um, you know, making sure that there's lighting in certain rooms, I can tell you, I go into lots of apartments that definitely don't have those things available. Um, and also the access, I think that's, you know, where you put in, having the access to disconnect, disconnecting means and overcurrent protection at all times, that's really important, and I think that a large percentage of our tenants don't have that, and I think that's a, a risk to them, you know? Um, looking at the windows reasonably weather tight, you know, what in part started this is that there was an apartment that didn't have windows, right? So, I, I, I applaud you guys on these minimum standards, I think that they're great, I think that you guys did a really good job. I just, I know what I see, and I think that, um, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know if there's a, a compromise and we say, you know, four at a start or something, but honestly, I think anything beyond three and, and we have the same issues we have now, um, with the same landlords that we have the same issues with. So, I applaud you, I, I think that this goes a long ways towards cleaning up some of those things, and so I appreciate all the work that went into it and, and I think that we have, um, some maybe discussions to be had about, you know, how do we, um, how do we make sure that we have safe, affordable, um, rental space for some of our most vulnerable populations, to be honest? Because we know that they won't come forward often because they fear being, um, kicked out of their apartments. And, and we know that happens, that happens routinely, and they won't come because they, they've been threatened by landlords, that if you call codes, you know? So, I, I think we have to take that into account when we're looking to say, how do we, how do we do it, and how do we fund it? Edit, you know, do we need to look at, you know, a part-time, um, employee that would, you know, that, that maybe we could look at, that, something, but I, I just think that's five months, five years is too great.
So, what timeline would you be looking at?
I think three years.
So, Eric, can you grab that numbers to see what, what it would take to achieve that standard?
Sure.
Cost-wise, and then we can go from there, John?
So, I, I know when we talked about this years ago, when we passed the first, like, the initial rental inspection, uh, legislation, unfortunately, like, we all know who the problems are, right? But we, we can't just, you can't just target the problems, right? So, um, we had talked about some different thoughts or different solutions, and could you implement something in the legislation that says upon failures, upon write-ups or complaints or something that that would trigger, right? Because we also know there are landlords out there that you could go ten years, and their places are immaculate, and they're safe, and they're up to standards, right? Um, but is there something that we could put in here if the basis is every five years, unless you get hit with, you get written up, you get, uh, it fails, whatever, then it triggers it, uh, another follow-up to twelve months or something to that effect, right? Um, is there, is there a way to implement that? So, it splits the difference, right? I mean, it, it, it targets the problems that we all know exist, and it keeps codes coming back, uh, frequently, without, uh, over, overtaxing the, the personnel.
And then, real quick, Vernon, with that, piggyback on John, Eric, if you're gonna find that out, and then instead of it being at that actual property, any property owned by the same landlord?
Okay.
Yeah, whether or not we, we could.
So, if I own twenty units and I have one problem, gives that trigger, these more routine inspections at all of my properties?
And, and I, and I think, I mean, the, the, where the conversation was last time, I didn't, obviously gotta get legal opinions on that too, right? To, to get Jack involved and run that.
Yeah.
Vernon?
I'm not on the committee, but since I vote on this, I feel like I have an opinion.
You matter.
But, uh, what I was, just, thanks, appreciate it.
I love you.
My, my hair didn't stop that as it flowed over my head.
My hair goes.
Um, I was just thinking, you know, if, if we, if you wanna implement something, I don't, sixty months does seem like a long time. Thirty-six months seems more reasonable, but yet, at the same time, I understand the cost of what it would take to have an employee, uh, go to these places, uh, on a continuous basis, year in, year out. So, why not make it, we're looking to target those problem landlords, right? So, those problem landlords are the ones that typically have the revolving door at their places. I, I don't know what the median timeframe is for people that rent, but maybe this should be worded where it states if a vacancy occurs, that targets, or not targets, but that warrants, um, to get reregistered. Maybe, maybe at a discounted rate, if, you know...
I think that already exists, doesn't it? That, that a vacancy, a vacancy, it's, it's in the code, a vacancy triggers a new inspection.
Vacancy unless it's within so much time.
So, why this line then?
Because they don't do it. The, I mean, the reason that we are, we asked for this is because the landlords, it's incumbent upon the landlord to say, hey, Vernon's moving out, but what happens is they, they don't. And then, you know, then we get complaints, I've had multiple complaints by multiple different people to include everything that happened with Second Street, is that they don't. And sometimes they move in literally in the middle of the night. Um, and, and so I do actually like the idea of, you know, if we were to say five years and say if there, if it was legal, to say if you got four violations in a twelve-month period, then we would assess all your properties.
Or?
Well, I don't know, I'm just kind of saying, you know, depending on what it is, right? Um, whatever is a reasonable number there within that timeframe, because I, you know, it hasn't, I applaud the fact that, that with best intention, and with the expectation that people will do what they're supposed to, that, that the initial registration was put in, however, we have learned that that is not the case. Um, and I tell, you know, right now, I tell, um, people who have complaints, you know what? When you see somebody move out, call codes, because, you know, if you know that's a problem apartment, and you've been calling me about it, call codes and tell them like, hey, this, this person's moving out. But it shouldn't be on our residents to kind of police next door, so I, I would be in favor of some compromise there.
If, if there's, if the person is registered, are the tenants' names registered?
In the register, just the landlord?
Just, uh, just the landlord. Because if there was some way of knowing who the tenant was, and that you learned that, hey, this is a different tenant.
It used to be done by, kind of, the trigger was like when they changed the water bill.
Right. We lost that when the city forced it into all landlord names.
While we keep, yeah, I mean, just when it's in one person's name, then it doesn't trigger that change.
Right.
You can't have national grid alert the city that there was a change in electric bill.
I mean, so we're trying to curb the dishonesty?
Well, make safe, affordable housing, and not just curb the dishonesty, I want safe, affordable housing, so safe housing for people because
Right.
there's housing that's not safe, and I think that is a, a city issue, and I think that's a council issue, um, for us to be responsive to.
Do you, do you have an idea how you'll pipe up on the switching of tenants, of people not registered?
Um, well, if we were to go to a model where we're doing them every set number of years, then, you know, getting into these places regardless of change of occupancy.
Right, but I mean, like, if somebody's not even listed as a rental, what, how do you find them? Or how do you know they're doing it? You don't, right?
You rely on the neighbors, some neighbors will call in and say it's empty again, uh, things like that. But I think, if I may, I think, you know, you've got to, uh, have a, a substantial fine for those who do not, uh, you know, let us know, and if we find out they're doing it, it's gotta be a substantial fine.
And I mean, I know this is more work, but is it possible for routine in the police department if they have interactions? Where they kind of look into that, or at least when they have interactions, they kind of get that in the form of reports and pass it on, if it makes sense?
It wouldn't have to interact, I mean, just driving by, you see someone moving in at eleven, twelve o'clock at night, that sends off a red flag right there. I mean, the police could actually just write down the address and just give it the codes the next day and say, hey, you know, this is something for you guys to look at.
I, I will say that, you know, you've, you've mentioned that there's a few bad apples as far as landlords go, and from what David Ryan told me, there's some of the, the better ones as far as compliance with getting their units inspected. I don't know if that helps paint some context for you. I think we do a little bit over two hundred a year, which seemed very low to me, but...
It does seem low. Which I, which I, I think goes to, there's just not compliance, right? And, and I don't know, I don't know if you're able to tap into, this is the, this is the million dollar question, and it was when we did this years ago, right? I don't know, it used to be the water bills was a trigger, uh, I don't know, post, post, postal off, the post office, I don't know, do they, is that, is that public knowledge when, or something, uh, when, when new addresses come in? Um, I, I don't know, right? I...
I, I don't know about the postal office, that didn't work, but, but no, that's, you know, that, that can be done. They see people moving in or out, middle of the night, they can, they can do that. I can have that conversation with the police chief.
And I'm, I'm curious, Mayor, you talked about the fines, how many fines have been actually written for non-compliance? I would, I'd like to see over the last twelve months, what is that number?
I don't know.
And I was gonna say that in terms of consistency of application of it, right? That, that we are finding and we are collecting on those, cause I agree with the mayor, right? If there's no disincentive, right, for some of these landlords to, right? And again, we have a lot of really good landlords in the city, and, but to those that endanger the people who live there, to include children, individuals with disabilities, right, elderly, right? That, that they deserve to be fined, and they deserve to pay it, and so, and also, we purchase new software, right? With the idea, do we not purchase some software that should help with some of this? Or if not, we need to look at, do we need software so that we can implement?
Talk about the I, the I-.
Yes.
I-.
That's what I thought, right? It should be able to assist with monitoring this.
Y- yeah, I mean, it's, it's not gonna help with consistency as far as, uh, compliance from landlords, but as far as our own tracking purposes, it's not that.
You know, and some just come to mind, it's worth someone looking into, but my phone knows more about me than I do. And I know, you know, you go on the internet and search somebody's name, it'll give you where they've lived, how old they are, you know? Pretty good for just searching the internet. I feel like there's a good chance of somebody out there that provides a service, maybe, that deals with this kind of thing. This is probably municipal, he's way bigger than us to try and keep this under control. You know, or maybe databases are compared, new technologies coming around where it can tell who's the owner of a property is not the person living there just by searching public records.
And I think we're close.
It may be worth it, or at least knowing what that costs or this.
With businesses, businesses are on a, either a one-year, if they're assembly space, or every three-year rotation for fire safety inspections. So, every three years, our crews, um, get into the businesses, and it doesn't matter who's renting the business, who owns the business, every three years, we're going to this address. Um, so, that type of a rotation with all the known rentals, and then, I believe, I believe there's no fee to register under the, the new thing that, that Dave is proposing. So, that, that gets the landlords to come in and register, no fee associated with it, and now we have a list of all these rental units that we can, can go check every set number of years.
When I was going around, and I was going to all the apartments, that, for example, you were talking about something that kind of helps, you know, one of the things I got was a listing of where everybody was, and you could clearly tell where all the rentals were and stuff. So, I'm, I'm, I think it's just about building a database and keeping it updated with, with the, the rentals, cause we know where most of them are. I mean, we might be, there might be... I mean, we might be, there might be a few escaping, but, and I think we're close. I applaud the effort and appreciate that, um, 'cause I think we're close. I think it's just figuring out a couple of things and, and how to implement it.
All right. Nothing else, Eric? You wanna bring some of that stuff back?
Yep.
Cost up, the numbers of rentals and all that stuff too, that we talked about. And I guess, like, if you can add on there, like, what, like, John asked about the number of violations, the dollar amount, and inspection fees, if you would, please.
Sure.
All right. So, we just put that back on for two weeks under unfinished? Or that'll stay on there, right, Tiffany?
Yeah.
Uh, all right, moving on to the RFP of three oh one West Oak Street.
We received one, one bid on three oh one, which has been provided to you, uh, from, I don't know if I should say the name or not right now.
It's, it's.
You can say it.
It's complex, oh.
Flux Property Concepts, and I believe in the amount of, uh...
Three hundred dollars? Three hundred dollars.
Yeah, three hundred dollars. So, I would recommend that we accept this as it, and then on next Tuesday for resolution, accept the bid.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, good with that. Do you need a, do you need a motion to put that on, or?
I don't, I don't think so. I can just...
All right, so that's it for unfinished business, and then the Schultz car wash. Brad, thank you.
Yeah, this is just a informational, uh, deal, just 'cause it's a, it's a lot of the norm. We have a car wash that's outside the city limits, wants to tie into city water and sewer, although we pay non-resident commercial water and sewer on Independence Avenue. We've gone through the calculations, the pump station there can handle the flow, uh, we're told fifteen hundred gallons a day. Really, that, that station was kind of sized appropriately for what was on it at the time. And, and it, it could hinder a little bit of development in that plaza there, um, like behind where Starbucks is, um, building, um, but with nothing planned there, I don't see any issues. So, this is just, um, transparency, just wanna bring it up for, just so everybody's aware that, uh, there's a proposed car wash in the town of Allegheny, wanting to connect, uh, under the road there to city water and sewer services.
What is the next step from you or from the city side?
Really, as long, we went through, um, everything seems to be on the up and up with them, so just giving them the, the nod to go ahead and, um, the approval to tie in.
And what's the timeline of giving that, the approval?
Anytime, really, as long as everybody, everybody's on board. We don't really need a resolution, it's just information. Like I say, just kinda transparency, throwing it out there for any thoughts, comments, concerns, you know, um, given the relationship that we have currently with Allegheny, just wanna make sure that everybody is comfortable.
Okay. Jason?
Yeah, I tell you, they want, are they building a new facility on the west side of Independence?
Yes.
Okay.
Crosswalk or Loop Center?
Yeah.
Could gravel, gravel a lot right now.
And the sewer, like, would that facility, to keep sediment net out of our sewer system, do they have to have some kinda trap on sand?
Yeah, so they have a reclamation device, um, so they have to pump it from there across the street because the elevation is, it's lower in elevation. So, they have to pump it to our system.
Okay.
So, that alone keeps a lot of the garbage out.
Okay.
And then they obviously have a sand and grather separator and things like that.
Okay, I just, just wanna make sure, we're picking up some kinda cost. We're not gonna see it, but, um...
So, since they're building this new building on the west side, which Allegheny or the town is getting the taxes and the benefit from this property, you're saying that down, down the road, if there's future development on our side, it might shorten the water or the water supply for new development? Can you put in a sunshine clause that, say, two years down the road, if something wants to be built in the city of Oleand, and you're willing to, uh, decrease the limits of water to hinder our development, that we can cease this contract at any time? Do you follow what I'm trying to say?
I see what you're saying, but I think we're, it's yay or aye. Because I'm just making that, you know, the town of Oleand's gonna benefit, the town of Allegheny's gonna benefit from property taxes, needs car wash, the Oleand's not. But if something wants to build on the east side of Independence Drive, which is in the city, and if it's reducing the water supply, it could cause a problem for city of Oleand development down the road. If Schultz wants to build a car wash, tell him, come on the east side.
Um, if you have a baby, add it to your house, you're not gonna tell your landlord or your tenants or your next-door neighbors that they have to cut back on their usage because they're in another apartment and that you need more water over here. I think, if anything, when you have a situation like that, let's say, if we are, we're gonna make money from the water and sewer from this company, so, maybe, uh, so with that, let's say, if there is more development on the Oleand side, wouldn't you invest in better infrastructure there to increase your capacity to be able to handle everything else down there, because that investment's gonna make you more money in the long run?
I would hope so, that we protect, you know, invest in the Oleand side, uh, I think you're less about the town of Oleand.
Well, yeah, you, you would invest in the Oleand side if you're gonna have more with it, people invest in that area, so...
Brad, real quick though, speaking of the east side, that, that lift station that we're talking about, tying in there, right now, that only picks up, right, those couple of houses?
Yeah, picks up, uh, three houses, Schultz Maintenance Garage there, and Holiday Park Center from Home, Value Home Center, the former Value Home Center, uh, west, that, that whole strip there.
What I was making was, there's probably not a lot of chance of development unless somebody knocks down the three houses or goes into the existing structure that's already tied into there.
Right, 'cause the fitness center goes the other way, so everything else...
Shouldn't be a problem.
No, it's just one of those things that, if, depending on what it is, if it gets developed, you know, um, how much water they're discharging, that station would have to be upgraded to handle more flow. And it just hasn't, you know, we have two pumps in there, they're relatively small pumps, it's an inch and a half discharge that pumps from there up to State Street. So, it just, it just has limited capacity, that's all.
So, it's a sewer, sewer pump?
Yeah.
It's limited?
San, dairy sewer, horse tank.
Okay.
How much, how much, uh, developed property, how much space is, is even there besides the three houses and, I mean, is there any empty space to build on?
It would have to be a parking lot behind, like, urcans and...
Behind Starbucks, where Starbucks is going in? That empty space there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Parking lot, that's what I'm saying, it's really not, it's, it's pretty limited. If you knock down the houses, now there's not those three houses tied into the lift station.
Yeah.
So, it would be a, a wash.
Yeah, there's nothing in the parking lot.
Is it, does the, would that lift station be in kinda your bottleneck? Does that take into account what a car wash does at like peak, you know, on a day like today, when everybody goes to the car wash and it's got high volume?
I'll just point on what they, the, the daily max that they're anticipating. It's only one car wash.
Yeah.
You know, one day.
Baby?
Yeah, it's one day. So, it's just, it's one drive-through car wash.
It's gotta go. It's a sixty-five percent reclamation, so they're gonna reclaim sixty-five percent of their water, reuse it, so discharge's actually gonna be lower.
Okay, that makes sense.
Water take.
Curious, make sure we didn't beat up a older lift station, but, you know? Yeah, sounds good to me.
That's a lot of them, really.
Anything else on that? Okay, thanks, Brad. Any other referrals, nothing, no committee reports, a motion for adjournment? Hey, second?
Second.
All those, Alden Robinson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sure enough, good shit.
All right, change it to Alden Women McCall.
Just so I can... You just said you're on it, come on.
All right, get outta here. Two-hour video show here, you don't need to be on the record.
Good.
Is that good, Smith?
Is this me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so I'll call together the, or call to order, the youth and Recreation Committee on Tuesday, February sixth. Please note, all, all women are present. Um, approval of minutes of the previous committee meeting that was held on Tuesday, January sixteenth. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second?
Sorry.
Thank you. Um, so, on unfinished business, we had the pool infrastructure, uh, assessment. Uh, John sent an email out on January eighteenth, I'll update. I don't know if you wanna update, I, I can update as well, it's fair, I mean, for the same time. Um, so, the change order requests, um, have been submitted, they'll do a full evaluation on Warbuck's pool, and at that time, within a week or two, they were gonna send down a crew to do an evaluation. I don't know if they've been here?
Any evidence yet, Chris? No.
Okay.
No.
And then, um, yeah, so, that's kind of where we stand with that. Any questions coming?
So, do we know, do we have an idea when that'll occur, or no?
Uh, we'll have to check with, uh, Jason Wavitz, I guess.
Um, yeah, we'll just...
We'll just follow up with, and I'll make sure everybody gets updated, or we can put it on for two weeks.
Yeah, we'll just keep it as unfinished business, just to see, as we kinda keep track of that progress, of that evaluation, I think will be important if we have updates. We have it, if we're not, we'll move forward. Um, okay, the Splash Park update, uh, same email, um, that they were preparing the bid documents and going to bid in a few weeks. Anything to add to that?
We should probably schedule one follow-up with Jason in the next week or so.
Okay. Um, and I, this isn't on the agenda, can I add it to the agenda? 'Cause, uh, it didn't make it, but I do have some, we talked about Florence, I do have some updates, um, from Mandy gave me additional information, and I'll just email it to you, Mayor. Um, and, and we'll have that the next time we have our committee meeting on, for unfinished business. Um, I had already spoke to Tiffany to put that on there, so, but I'll copy you all on it, she just gave me some additional details about the field, so... And he questions on, all right, new, for, no new referrals for consideration, no committee reports, motion to adjourn.
Sorry.